To call to order the September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting of the Village Board. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Markhart.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne. And Trustee Takaoaka gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Cook to be President Pro Tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markhart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other
Okay. I know we have at least several citizens who are here to address the board, so who would like to come up first? Ladies first, Chris. Come on up.
Chris Meyer, three seven one, Cherry Valley Road. I know a young lady a couple of months ago brought up this item, and it's about the intersection by the high school of Fairway and Lakeview. The other day, I was there and witnessed what could have been a really bad accident. Somebody turning left, somebody trying to come out. The traffic on Fairway has increased immensely, and I really think it's time for the village to install either a three-way stop sign, which I think could be worse than a stoplight. And I hope you'll give it some consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Well, we already had something on the agenda about intersection improvements. Maybe we can add that to our list?
Yeah, so the primary location, we're looking at pedestrian and bicycle concerns and crossings on Fairway, a little south of this intersection that she referred to. I know they did a warrant study several years ago to see about whether or not a signalized intersection would made sense, and at that time, the numbers didn't reach, but this is certainly something we could continue to look into.
Yeah, that's going to be a matter of keeping checking the numbers.
Did they meet warrants?
It was almost a bad accident. I see him coming down Fairway. His people are speeding.
Yeah. Gentlemen, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Todd Renahan, one twenty-two South Deer Path in Vernon Hills. John Taylor with American Legion Post twelve forty-seven. We've got a few things we'd like to thank the village for. First and foremost is your six years of continued support with our annual golf outing. Each year, it seems that we raise a little more money, thanks to the residents and then yourself. So, thank you for that. We also have some of the trustees were nice enough to help us with this whole sponsors. We got some certificates of appreciation to Trustee Cook, John Patrillo, Assistant Village Manager Patrillo, and Chief Kreese as well. Just need to pass those out.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. No, my pleasure.
And the third thing we'd like to thank the village for is, in June, we've had the higher, Jim Higher Fishing Derby. We've had for several decades now, where soldiers, veterans that come down from Great Lakes Naval Station up in that area at the hospital, come down. It's a day of fishing, and it's
Barbecue lunch.
Yeah, barbecue and the lunch, and the police department, and Andy, the whole crew, they're helping out a lot. So, we appreciate that. And it's, I've been doing it, I guess, ten years myself, and I didn't know what it was going to be like. Being the younger guy in our legion, I thought it was going to be a bunch of old Vietnam veterans. Wow, was I ever wrong. I also brought my kids, said, hey, we need some gophers, too. So, we got there, and there were men and women of all ages, eighteen years old, sixty-eight years old. Many had alcohol drug issues. And it was something how, in the military, we just bond. Doesn't matter what your branch is, doesn't matter what your rank is, whether you were enlisted or you were in office, or we're all in big family. So, it's a little fun to give. I was in the Army, so talk slower for the Marines and all the other branches that we have. So, we have fun with that. But all it was, was just talking, and that's all they wanted to do, was reminisce about the good old days. And you might be shocked at this, but we were about to leave one day, and my youngest daughter, who ironically enough, went off to the Army. She talked to one female Marine that lost her legs in the war, and told my daughter I would still do it again, even with the Marines that I was with. And then that hits you, and then sure enough, later on, my daughter went. But she got home, we got home, and had to tell a story. She says, Mom, you know, when we're about to leave? Oh, yeah. Dad starts talking to that one more person. With that one more person, we were finishing each other's sentences. Even though we did not know each other, we were stationed in West, in Baumholder, West Germany, in the late eighties, the same post at the same time, the Burger King, the PX, or this and that. It was just, it's a small world. So, the point of that is to talk to everybody, even though your wife's going to tell you not to. But we appreciate the police department's support, the village, the trustees, the residents. We really appreciate six years of support, and it's, we're only a quarter of the way there. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for everything you guys do in town, and stuff. We appreciate it. Yeah.
It's not even work. It's fun. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
No, and the golf outing, you're right, was great this year, and, boy, the work that the police department, especially Andy, does on the fishing derby is incredible. So, thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Come on up.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Jonathan Rosales. I'm here to represent the Mundaline Tool Library. I'm here with Mark Bowles, the treasurer of the Tool Library. I was here two years ago, here to provide an update for those who maybe were not here, anyone at home listening. The Tool Library is a registered five oh one C three nonprofit. It works just like a regular book library, but we lend it tools. So, we have anything from a complicated saw for woodworking, anything to a hammer, a level, any tool you can imagine. I was here two years ago because we had just expanded our services to include Vernon Hills residents. And I was really excited because we were, I think we were closing in at a thousand tools and maybe a couple hundred members. Today, we're at almost ten thousand tools with almost thirteen hundred members. So, it's really gone really well. We have a lot of residents from Vernon Hills that visit us. Unfortunately, we have been temporarily closed for the last month and a half or so. The building we were located in was sold, and we have to vacate. We have found a new space at three oh nine North Seymour Avenue in Mundaline. However, it is, it was vacant for a long time. There's a lot of updates we need to make to make it suitable for our Tool Library. Just before closing, we had also opened our wood shop. We hosted several Boy Scouts and Girl Scout groups to teach them some woodworking. We have some very skilled woodworkers that helped them develop their skills. So, we had a lot of plans for this wood shop and this library. We've now found ourselves in a little bit of a need of help because there's just a lot of expenses with building on an entire space that wasn't suitable for the Tool Library to begin with. So, for the first time, we have to pay rent. The building that we were in before was rent-free, provided by the village of Mundaline. So, that's just another obstacle for us that we are working hard to overcome. After, Mark's going to provide a little bit more of the financial situation, and then we can answer any questions if you have any. Okay?
Thank you, everybody. The, as Jonathan said, we are, we are a nonprofit, tax-exempt nonprofit, and we are operated exclusively by volunteers. We have no employees. We hope not to have the financial burden of employees, and we hope to continue to utilize our community resources. The, with our new rent obligations and accompanying upkeep obligations, as well as the build-out costs, we are, we have to have very, very careful financial planning, and we are going to state, local and federal governments, as well as private granting organizations. We're canvassing all possible donors to ask if they might be interested in assisting us with funding. With regard to local municipalities like yourselves that are right in our immediate vicinity, I think we can demonstrate the great benefit that we have provided to Vernon Hills and the neighboring communities with real data and incredible attestations by our members. I'll tell you, from a personal perspective, I would go in and volunteer most Saturdays, and it was such a joy because you, we'd be standing at the desk, and we would have so many people come in and say, thank you for doing this. This is such a great idea. And at a retail store, you wouldn't receive thank yous like that. It was a true community builder, an absolute benefit to the people who live within several miles of that location. And so, we want that to continue, and we need some additional funding. We have been able to, we have started a capital campaign. We are up on GoFundMe, and we're soliciting our members, and we have a local benefactor who, through his company, has agreed to assist us very graciously with some funds. And that's going to help, but we still need some more assistance wherever we can find it, and that is why we're here, just to tell you about the Tool Library, and ask that if it fits into your plans and your budgeting, we'd love to be able to say that Vernon Hills is a sponsor of the Tool Library as well.
Before I get any questions from the board, do we have, I think we still have a balance in our social service grant fund, correct?
Yes, I believe there's between about three thousand and thirty-five hundred dollars that was unaccounted for or unused in the current fiscal year.
Comments or thoughts from the board?
Are you aware of those social grants?
Not by name. I don't know, Jonathan, if you are. Is this something to apply to?
Through the village.
Yeah, on an annual basis, we donate a certain amount to different, you know, people that apply. And we have this extra for this year, so.
Yeah. I think, you know, find a way to tie it to Vernon Hills.
Pardon?
Find a way to let the Tool Library tie it to Vernon Hills. You said, like, do you, you're open to Mundaline and Vernon Hills residents, or are you only open, are you open to anyone who wants to pay? How does it work?
Well, there's no, let me give you a slightly longish answer. Initially, when we were, when our landlord was the village of Mundaline, we opened, we were open only to Mundaline residents. That ended, I don't know, a year and a half, two years ago, and we opened it up to all of Lake County. But that is, we're actively discussing whether to even get rid of that geographic limitation, and the only real restriction, there's no legal restriction that's applicable to us. It's just that we don't want to be lending out, you know, an eight hundred dollar machine to someone who lives a hundred miles away in case they don't return it. It's not like a book library. So, that's, it's a prudent limitation, but the short answer is, we are open to all Vernon Hills residents and beyond. As far as tying our organization to Vernon Hills, we have, we have done, we can do searches by zip code. That's how we keep our data of the number of members and the usage rate by zip code. We don't have it broken out by township, and I, so, and I can say that we, we've made applications and received grants from Libertyville Township. For two years in a row, we received some funds, and we have another application pending there. And we've provided that sort of data to Libertyville Township, and they've been very receptive to it.
I think the best route at this point, then, is using the grants, is who can they contact on staff regarding that?
They can contact either myself or John Patrillo, Assistant Village Manager, and we can give information on our social service grant program. Unfortunately, our program for two thousand twenty-four is closed, but we usually begin accepting applications right after the first of the year.
Okay.
So, you're saying they could apply for maybe what we have not used this year?
Correct. I think the only, the only thing we'd have to look into a little further is the nature of the social service grant versus, I don't know if this is a social service. It's certainly a service, but we would have to make a decision as a body that that was appropriate for those funds.
Well, we absolutely will pursue that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
So, I can attest to the Mundaline Tool Library. I've been a member for a couple of years, and I've used their tools several times, and it's a great service. And I did speak with one of your colleagues a couple of months ago, who informed me about the move and even mentioned the location you're moving to as one of the possibilities. And I also understand that, I asked him if he'd spoken with anyone in Vernon Hills, and he said that, that they, I believe they had, looking for a possible site here. And unfortunately, we didn't have anything that seemed appropriate for your needs. But I did want to point out that I have used the service, and it is really nice, and you might want to consider going there to check it out if you have any tool needs.
Usually, that's how I start my discussions of the Tool Library. I'd say, tell everyone, come and visit us. Now, I got to delay it a bit because we have to reopen, hopefully by the end of October, but it is a wonderful place.
Well, so, yeah, go ahead and contact staff, and then they can bring it back to us, and maybe there's, you know, good chance we can do something.
All right.
Thank you.
Because what you guys do, it's a great thing you guys are doing, so.
Thank you. And for any announcements, we post on our website, mundalintoollibrary.org, and then we're also pretty active on our Facebook page, Mundaline Tool Library.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to address the board? Okay, then, next item would be Village Manager New Service Request System, correct?
Thank you, Trustee Cook. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I just wanted to take a few minutes this evening to update the board and the community on a project that our staff has been working on for pretty much all of two thousand twenty-four. We are always now looking to find new ways to streamline service, make things more efficient, and a lot of that usually stems around using technology. For example, last year, the village implemented a new electronic records management software. We are now in the process of converting decades of village paper records into digital searchable files. Liz Cole, at the end, has been a big help with that the last year in scanning probably thousands and thousands of documents already, with only a few million more to go. But our next example is a way to try and streamline and improve how we achieve customer service in the village. And currently, for example, if a resident wants to receive service from the village, they have a few methods that they can go about. They can call the village hall during our business hours. If they catch us after business hours, they can leave a voicemail. If they happen to have a staff member's email, they can send us an email with the request, or they can certainly come in person and visit. Obviously, in two thousand twenty-four, those aren't the most convenient options for most people. Everybody feels more comfortable, right, wrong, or indifferent, doing things through their smartphone or tablet. And so, our staff has looked into a request-for-service software that will now give residents that option to submit requests online via their smartphone tablet or computer. Once we get those requests currently, the other challenge we have internally is how do we, how do we track those requests? How do we make sure that there's a record of the requests that we received? How do we make sure that our service standard is being met? So, for example, if we get a phone call, that phone call might turn into a message on a sticky note that then eventually makes its way into an email to a department head, that then makes its way to another staff member who's eventually going to complete that task. Now, the system works, but it could be better. And so, in the coming weeks, we're going to be introducing this new software. It will be featured on the homepage of our village website, and I just wanted to provide the board with a quick rundown of kind of how that new user experience is going to look. So, as I mentioned, this will allow our residents to submit requests via smartphone tablet or PC via the Internet. It's a cloud-based platform, twenty-four seven. It's user-friendly, so you do not need an account to use the software. So, no more passwords and usernames that you have to memorize. You can submit a request without any of those credentials. We have over thirty form categories already prepared, and so, we were able to use our intellectual knowledge and institutional knowledge of the village to keep track of the common FAQs and service request types that we receive, and from there, we were able to create forms for the specific data that we're looking for to achieve and complete that service request. In addition to that, residents have the opportunity to also upload images and files as well. So, for example, if there's a request for a pothole in the street, you can not only tell us the address where the pothole is, but you can take a picture of it and attach that to a request. That's also, not only convenient for the resident, but now it also helps us on our end, because now, when we receive that request, instead of having to send, for example, a Public Works Crew member out to the site, see how big the hole is and measure it, we actually have the advantage of seeing the picture, and we can save time and be more efficient in completing that task. The system also includes a complete upload of all of the addresses in the village, so we're not relying on any incorrect typed addresses. You can select from a dropdown of validated street addresses in the village. So, that's going to help for accuracy in terms of our record and completing those tasks. In addition to that, when you submit a request, residents will be assigned a tracking number. They can use that tracking number to track the progress of their request through its completion, and then if you provide an email address, you can also receive email updates as our staff is working through that, through completion. So, on the staff end, when you submit a request, the different forms are now routed specifically to the appropriate department and staff member that's responsible for completing that request. So, this ensures that, again, no more lost sticky notes, no more emails that maybe go to someone's inbox while they're on vacation. This is going to ensure that requests are handled correctly and promptly. In addition to that, we can set status of requests. So, for example, if a request is submitted to a certain staff member, and they might be out of town on vacation or on leave, anyone can log into the system and check on the status of that request and provide an update to the resident as they inquire about that. We also have the ability to print work orders. So, as we get maybe a collection of requests, a crew leader or supervisor can print the work orders, administer those to their staff, and that way, it's an efficient way to manage those throughout the workday. And then, last but not least, we have now a record and database of all the requests. And so, from time to time, there could be a recurring problem. If we have to go through emails to find, oh, I think we, I think that came in. I wasn't sure what year it was. We now have a database and a record of when that request was. We can see the address, the person that submitted it, and all that information. So, it's been a long process. We're very proud of this work. Again, this should be launched in the next few weeks. Director Venata, Director Jennings, James Dunning, our IT coordinator and Assistant Village Manager Patrillo, have all put in a lot of hard work in getting this program up and running. And again, look for that on our village website. It'll be on the homepage in a SRS icon. Thank you.
Excellent. Comments from the board? That's good. It should make things a lot easier. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, the next item is the Public Works Director, Venata, for C V ditch restoration update.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to give a quick update on the C V ditch restoration project, and also just take a quick moment to give a, kind of a brief overview of how we got there and some of the state of our waterways within the village. So, you can see on this image, the blue, I'll start with the black outline is the village limits Vernon Hills. The blue is the C V ditch. It's the primary waterway throughout the village. It travels through our lakes, goes all the way down into Indian Creek, which is in yellow, which makes up the southeastern border of the village, which then ultimately flows into the Des Plaines River. So, as you know, we've come before the board several times. Over the last several years, we've been working on this C V ditch restoration project. As some of you may know, the reason this originally came up is we were seeing water quality issues within Lake Charles, sediment deposits, invasive species growth. A lot of this was due to upstream erosion filtering in. So, we focused on this stretch just north, it's circled in red, of the C V ditch, where we could really make some good change on the upstream side, kind of cause the root of the problem. But as we were going through this process, so the SMC led it, we, there was a large amount of ARPA funding that D C E O gave to SMC to do regional stormwater projects. So, we thought this was the perfect project for this. And during their concept review phase, this wasn't the only, the only work that is done within this corridor. The engineer actually identified around ten million dollars worth of projects throughout the lakes and the C V ditch, which include additional stream bank restorations, the lake shoreline stabilizations, erosion and abutments, among others. So, they did a priority list, and the reason we picked the one we did was it was really the, one of the main root causes that caused some trickle-down effect from there. But these aren't the only projects that we need to focus on over a long period of time within the village. We're also designing some work on the south end of Lake Charles. There's the dam and the spillway there. There's some small improvements that need to be made to that, which we're currently designing, that we, to bring the dam elevations. It's settled a little bit up to the correct permitted grade. That should take place next year. And there's also some other locations. If you remembered our last board meeting, Mayor Byrne mentioned Indian Creek. We're seeing some of the same issues there, some shoreline stabilization, invasive species that are crowding into that area. One of the, one of the difficult issues with Indian Creek specifically is just the wide amount of jurisdictions. You know, a lot of the upstream end falls within other municipalities, so there's only so much we can control. Also, within our village boundaries, a lot of the shoreline is owned by private properties, private entities, HOAs, so the village doesn't have much jurisdiction over the shoreline itself. And then, obviously, the village of Buffalo Grove on the south side and some unincorporated Lake County, so it's not all in Vernon Hills. But one of the reasons that I just wanted to highlight all this is just to make sure there's an understanding that these waterways and these issues aren't something that are going to go away, and we're going to have to continue to fund and budget in our CIP money to continue to address both the maintenance of these waterways, as well as future projects for the long term. So, just to briefly touch on, I think, I brought this slide to you several weeks ago. You can see that this is some of the projects that the consultant identified as needing work within the northern half of the C V ditch. The area in red is the stream stabilization and restoration, where we're going to focus our efforts on this two million dollar grant that we received from the SMC. And a brief update on the project. So, the Stormwater Management Commission has been the lead agency thus far. We haven't spent any money at this point. They have been hiring the consultant and just keeping us as a stakeholder. So, they've gone through the concept design and scope evaluation. Right now, we're in the middle of the detailed design. They're at about the ninety-five percent level, and it's being permitted with the core. We've been holding in our budget, our grant match, but later this year, we should be finalizing our I G A with the SMC, and that's actually going to be where the management switches. It's going to then fall under the village to be the lead agency through construction, and will be reimbursed by the SMC for that project. And the last is a visual I showed one other time. This is just a rendering of ultimately what that stream bank stabilization project will look like. So, there will be more to come in the coming weeks and months on this project, and we'll expect to see some work out there, hopefully, early next year. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Comments or questions from the board?
So, what's our financial commitment going to be?
So, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is how much we had budgeted. There's both the park district, because some of this is adjacent parkland, as well as Vernon, they're pitching in a portion of it, as well as us. I believe it's a twenty percent grant match for the full amount of the grant, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? None of this, there's no part of this that's a plan to enclose any part of the creek on the golf course, right, to make some of those holes more playable?
No, not at this time. There was a project, you know, several years ago to restore the banks. There was a project, you know, several years ago to restore the banks throughout the golf course. And that's another area that will need some ongoing maintenance and restoration. When you get to these, you know, more ecological type sites, they're never-ending, never-ending work.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on this? All right, then nothing else from any wise staff with any comments? Okay, then next would be omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through E?
Can we pull B?
Pull B?
Just a minute.
Okay. So, then it would be A, C, D, and E?
E.
A motion to approve A, C, and D?
And E.
And E.
Second.
Is there a second?
Michael, second.
Second, oh, you did.
Second, oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
Yeah, motion of second. Just one comment to make. We may want to elaborate on a little bit on, does D tie into, Chris, with some of the discussions we've had here recently from citizens in that?
Yes, it does. This is the project that I've been referring to to do a pedestrian and bicycle safety analysis on Fairway at both Cougar and Nike, as well as around the Hawthorne Elementary South. It also includes a general crosswalk policy and analysis and focus on how we should be approaching different crosswalks throughout the village, whether they are adjacent to critical facilities like schools, parks, and what kind of treatments we should do for each. So, each time a request comes up, each time a question comes up in the community, we have a strong foundation to handle those all equally.
Okay, so the information from this study will help us move forward with those safety concerns?
That's correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, I didn't understand. Was it looking at, you'd mentioned three particular intersections that we're focusing on?
That's correct. So, there's two scopes of work. There was originally three scopes of work with this. We were going to, the C D W, traffic signals. We were notified by I dot that they're working on that, so we eliminated that. The second scope of work is a detailed analysis of three intersections. It's Fairway and Cougar, Fairway and Nike, and Aspen, the crossing at Aspen adjacent to Hawthorne South Elementary School. These, the scope will include a, doing an analysis, a warrant analysis on these to make sure they don't trigger any additional signals or stop signs or anything like that, a safety improvements, as well as the actual design of some drawings with that. So, if we, through this process, we come up with some improvements that can be made, included within this scope would be to design them and implement them as well.
So, to the resident's question, should we include the southern Lakeview Fairway as part of that, or is that not really appropriate for this? Because it's not as much of a pedestrian thing, that's just a general traffic.
So, Lakeview and Fairway, from what I understand and what we heard in public comment, was it was a traffic issue? I know that this was evaluated several years ago. Did a signal warrant analysis to see if it warranted a stoplight or a stop sign. It didn't at that time. This is certainly something that we can look into. I would like to get with the police department as well, look at some of the traffic data. That is not, that intersection is not directly included in this scope of intersections to evaluate, other than the fact that we will be coming up with a standardized approach to crosswalks. But this one focuses more on the pedestrian safety, the bicycle safety, some of the other incidents that we've been hearing about in the community.
So, we'll look separately into that intersection once again?
Correct.
You know, we've looked at it in the past.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There are no other comments then? We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there, roll call, please.
Trustee Markhart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Appenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Item B, approval of the minutes of the regular village board meeting of September 3rd, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion of second. Any comments, corrections, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markhart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim?
Abstain.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. No unfinished business, correct? All right, then under new business, approval in a passage of Resolution 2024-028, a resolution authorizing approval of a right-of-way permitting agreement with I-3 Broadband. Director Venata?
Yeah, so the village was approached by I-3 Broadband. They are a telecommunications company that wants to expand into this area. And as part of their, bringing their service into the village, we wanted to have a way to streamline the permitting process as well as come to mutually agreed terms for work within the village's right-of-way. So, we worked with our attorney to come up with this right-of-way agreement. And I have Brian Olson here from I-3 Broadband. They'd be happy to come up and answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Mark. Could you state your name for the?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm Brian Olson with I-3 Broadband.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
So, you'll be, this is creating competition for internet service throughout the community?
Is that? That's correct. We compete directly mostly with Comcast and eighteen T, for example.
Are you, is I-3 a parent company? Or is the name you'll be selling it under is a different name?
I-3 Broadband is, we're an LLC, our DBA, obviously, I-3 Broadband is the name which we sell under.
What's the DBA?
I-3, or I-3 Broadband.
Where else, where are you like up and running right now in the area?
So, I always tell people, we've been in the internet business since we all refer to dial-up as being cool. We started out as one of the largest wholesalers of dial-up internet in the late nineties and early two thousands. That transitioned into becoming a C L E C, what's called a C L E C, a phone company per se, right? In 2009, we began our residential expansion of our fiber network throughout the greater Peoria area. We now have grown into one of the largest fiber-to-the-home companies throughout central Illinois. A few years back, we expanded throughout the suburbs of St. Louis. And last year, we started deployment out in McHenry County and out in the greater Rockford area. This, end of this year and into the upcoming year, we've done a lot of the preparatory work for a lot of the communities here in Lake County.
So, do, would Comcast and eighteen T lease your fiber optic lines? Or is it you own them and your utilization?
This is a completely privately invested expansion of a new network throughout the areas.
And so, what communities in the village would you be expanding to? Everywhere.
In the county or in?
No, in Vernon Hills. You'd go to every neighborhood, is that?
Every neighborhood. What our, what an expansion of a fiber-to-the-home network looks like is a lot like the cable network back in the sixties and seventies. It was brand-new, and it was being rolled out past every home in the community.
And what's the timeframe?
Excuse me?
What's the hoped timeframe?
We, in the initial rollouts of working with a community, we take a crawl, walk, run approach, right? And so, we build in groups of about three to five hundred homes at a time. And as we develop that relationship with Public Works and with the residents, we determine what that tolerance is. I would say in a community of just over ten thousand passings, you would anticipate probably two to three thousand passings a year would be what everyone would be considered tolerable.
And I will add that the Phase 1 that I-3 is looking at is in the northwest portion of the village. It's, they'll be entering the village off of Butterfield Road around Greg's Parkway and doing the northwestern half was the Phase 1 of the construction that they're looking at.
Any other?
If I can add something as well?
Yes, sir.
The right-of-way permitting agreement requires this company to comply with our right-of-way ordinance, which requires coordination with Public Works, requires insurance, bonding, restoration, et cetera. This company is authorized to provide the service by the Illinois Commerce Commission. So, we have the right to manage our right-of-way. We don't have the right to reject approved utility providers from using it. So, we will, they will be coordinating with Public Works and complying with our ordinance in very large part.
Are there, are there any conduits there that you'd be tying into? Or do you have to dig up?
This is all brand-new infrastructure. Privately, private investment of all new infrastructure.
You're digging up the ground everywhere?
Gently. We're also trying to maintain, you know, we're trying to get customers as well, so. Restoration is a key and critical part of what we do and why we view ourselves as being different.
Will you be boring, directional boring?
Primary, yeah.
So, it won't be trenching, mostly won't be digging up, it'll be boring?
Dig a spot and bore. Yeah, yeah. That's the way most of the new stuff goes in, you dig a spot and you bore a couple blocks.
Construction type.
Yeah.
Part of our right-of-way agreement restricts them being able to open cut in the roadway. They will do predominantly boring. They will have to have several access points. So, they'll have little boxes that will be out in the parkways or in utility easements, behind rear yard, side yard, utility easements, access points whenever they do get a customer. That's where they're going to be tying back into the fiber that they have, so. But from what we've seen from the preliminary plans, it's all going to be directional board. They're not going to open and cut the streets. But there will be several utility boxes. They have one almost between two houses, I think.
Yeah, typically, like you see a transformer from the power company. You see one every other house, right, that's to serve the two houses. Our network is not much different than that, other than it's all subterranean. So, what we leave in the wake of restoration is a little green lid about the size of a laptop, and it's flat and flush with the ground. You can mow right over it.
How big is the green lid?
It's about the size of a laptop, eleven inches by fourteen inches, precisely.
So, if you hit irrigation? If you hit irrigation and the people, for example, like I have irrigation in the parkway.
We fix irrigation.
You'll fix it onsite on, as he may bust through?
Yep. And even there, it's a relationship we have with the community, almost in perpetuity, just like your existing phone and cable providers. You know, we're looking to get started again, crawl, walk, run. Have one of the neighborhoods potentially come in development this year.
Yeah, I understand, like you want to make sure you have, you know, good PR, you know, fixing. The question I have is, in the contracts or in the agreements, is the restoration specifically laid out what must be done for the restoration?
It's specific in our right-of-way ordinance. There are requirements that they have to put up bonds. And if they don't do the restoration, we can call the bond and do it ourselves.
So, and, yeah, but the restoration, for example, irrigation, if we have it in the right, if it's in the parkway, which is like the right-of-way, right, usually?
Right.
So, sometimes, from experience, that if they're in the right-of-way putting, not they being like utility companies, tear up the irrigation, I'm stuck with the bill. Because they say that you don't, you know, you're right-of-way, you can't have irrigation or because you put the irrigation in the right-of-way, you're responsible for that damage, even if we dig underneath. So, we just want to make sure that our residents are protected. I hear what you're saying, good PR, you don't want to piss off potential, excuse me, you don't make potential new customers upset. But we just want to make sure we protect our residents, too.
And the other thing is, the plans have to be presented to our Public Works Department for approval. So, we will be reviewing plans prior to the work beginning. Isn't that correct, Chris?
Yes, and one of the items that we added to this right-of-way permitting agreement was to make sure they did have detailed information of the existing utilities in the area. We want to have a good idea of where they're going in and what's there, so it's not designing things on the fly in construction when they're out in the field and figuring out where things need to go. So, we've had as many checks as we could see that were reasonable to make sure we're getting a well-thought-out set of plans and construction drawings through this process.
Yeah, I mean, usually in, I mean, you know where the sewers are, too, obviously, in the utilities. But what you really don't know are where the irrigation lines are. That's all.
Pet fences as well.
And pet fences.
Those occasionally get cut.
Right, exactly. Those are a little easier to fix than an irrigation line. But you're correct, yeah, through your experience. Have you had issues with sewers hitting, hitting, like, I can't think of the word, sanitaries coming from the home?
A citywide utility infrastructure project will have its problems. They need to get corrected. So, sewer laterals can get hit. A lot of times, they don't get located, they don't get located properly. Again, if our network's running right through, if there's an orange conduit running right through the middle of it, one, two, ten years later, we'll be fixing it.
Yeah.
And paying for that repair. Those are all spelled out.
And the potential damage that occurred in the home for a backed-up sewer, too.
Yeah, those types of occurrences are spelled out both in the right-of-way agreement and then also by the state authorization.
I haven't seen the right-of-way agreement, so that's my answer. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, then is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-028?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion of second? Roll call, please.
Trustee Markhart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Second item is approval in passage of Resolution 2024-029, a resolution granting approval of an outdoor establishment permit for a mobile gas station and convenience store, 485 West Townline Road. Director Jennings?
Thank you. Vernon Food Mart was recently in front of the Liquor Control Commission for approval of a liquor license. There are new, there's new management for this particular location. At that time, they had also applied for an outdoor merchandise permit. We didn't have all the materials to be able to put that in front of the board at that same meeting. So, Representative of Vernon Food Mart is here tonight requesting outdoor establishment permit. As you see in this photograph, they have an existing ice machine, an existing propane exchange cage, and they're proposing firewood to be added to that. We did not find any record of formal approval of the outdoor establishment permit prior to this. So, we suggest that they come in for a new permit to clearly document what they're allowed to have. The Countryside Fire Protection District has reviewed this. They had no comment, no objection. So, in your packet is a resolution recognizing this particular plan and the application that came in, and just general compliance with the code section, which is Chapter 10, Article 6, Section 10, 192. With that, Jippe Thomas from Vernon Food Mart is here to answer any questions you might have.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jippe Thomas. I'm representing Vernon Food Mart, Inc., which just took over this new business at Townline Road in Butterfield. So, I'm actually here for the new permits for three items, which is already up in the spring.
Okay. Comments or questions from the board?
I have more of a comment in terms of the way the ordinance is written as opposed to the establishment order. Section 1, it says an outdoor dining establishment permit. Is it supposed to be written that way? Because it's part of the?
Surprised to find out that we sometimes copy and paste from a prior resolution.
You have it several places that it says dining. I just wanted to make sure that's corrected before we?
I will be sure to cut the references to dining before we have this.
Okay. And then in terms of the diagram here, it's, there's no real key. All I see is peas, yeah, the picture just says peas. Is that? Am I looking at the wrong thing? Oh, just on there.
Put the two together, it makes more sense.
So, is there going to be firewood all the way around that?
Oh, it's just a small.
Just the area that's yellow.
Just, oh, the wood is just there. Oh, gotcha, okay. And then, and then the ice will, oh, you're just adding, this has just had the wood. The ice is already there. Is that the?
Yes, the ice is already there, and that propane, were you planning to move that propane against the building? Or leave it where it is? Because the drawing we got had it moving against the building.
Against the building next to the ice?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, so what are, in the drawing here, do the peas mean anything? Is that for propane? Or? I don't know if you know what I'm referring to. Do you know, the, in the packet?
I know, I think those are parking spaces.
Oh, maybe they're...
There are a couple parking spaces right in front of there.
There is, there is parking spaces, there's handicap, just one parking, that's all.
Yeah.
In the front, yeah.
Oh, beyond the, beyond the concrete foundation, okay. So it's sort of off where this picture is?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Okay.
And I'd be happy to, while updating the, the resolution to remove the reference to outdoor dining, I can add an additional condition, just noting that the propane would remain as-is and not as shown on the diagram between the columns.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
What's that porta potty for? There's a porta potty in the corner over there.
Oh, that was, that was, North Shore Gas was doing some construction and they put...
Those guys were working on the...
Yeah. All those improvements they were doing there at the corner?
That, that's not the, the mobile.
That's not the part of it. I think that's been, that's been removed already, so.
And the, I talked to Director Jennings today, the ice cream thing you had out there today, that was just because you were modeling the inside and that, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So it'll look like what's, it'll look like what's in the picture we're looking at here with the propane between the two poles, the ice, and then the firewood on the corner.
That's exactly what it is.
And we're limiting the firewood to a certain amount of space? Is it, was it specific in the ordinance? Yeah.
Oh, there's actually, I believe you have a dimension on one of the pages. So it would be, the, the full application is going to be attached to the resolution.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-029 with the changes we've talked about in that?
Motion to approve Resolution 2024-029.
Second.
Motion is second. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markhart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, nothing else? Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn the vote in court meeting and go to committee of the whole?
So I'm in.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned and we're going right into committee.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 17, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markhart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
President Byrne?
You searched.
And Trustee Takahoka? Trustee Takahoka gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Oh, you, you didn't, you didn't get me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Schenk?
Here.
We messed her up.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's committee meeting?
I'd like to nominate, nominate Trustee Cook to be chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markhart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion carries. First item is approval of the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of August 13, 2024?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markhart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is the discussion of Certificate of Building and Use Conversion Procedures, Section 4.14 of the zoning code.
Thank you. The Committee of the Whole discussed some recommendations by staff at the August 13 meeting to consider modifying, modifying Section 414 of the zoning code, which is the Certificate of Building and Use Conversion Procedures. At the conclusion of that discussion, the direction from the committee was for staff to draft the amendments that had been discussed sort of conceptually so that the committee could see how it looked on paper before sending this to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing. So that draft is in your packet for this evening. By way of summary, what staff has done with the, this section of the code is, is listed here. We've simplified the list of conditions requiring a certificate. So basically, the trigger for the, the certificate, it remains similar. We've just removed some of the more confusing language to make it clearer how a single, single-user building would be handled, how a, a shopping center would be handled, just so it's, it's more intuitively obvious to a reader how this particular requirement would be applied. The second is establishing a higher non-retail limit for the mall. The mall is currently approximately 31.5% non-retail. This would set a limit of 35% before requiring an additional certificate of use conversion for, for a unit within the mall, specifically the portion that's held in common ownership. So that'd be the centennial portion of the mall. We've, in the next section, we've clarified how the calculation handles certain unique scenarios. So how are vacant units handled, how is new construction handled, how would additions be handled? So anytime a vacant unit is part of this calculation, it's considered to be a retail unit. So lacking any user, it goes with the retail. New construction, if that new construction is intended to specifically allow a non-retail, that it would go with the non-retail calculation, same thing for additions. So there was no real clear language in the code prior to that. The, one of the main changes that we worked on was the description of the review procedure to make it clear how the review works with the special use requirements. So sometimes they're on a parallel track. The, the final decision on the certificate is usually deferred until the special use review concludes. So it also makes clear the role of the Committee of the Whole in recommending approval to the board of the certificate. The way the language currently reads makes it sound as though the Committee of the Whole takes final action, which is not the case. The application has been revised, sorry, excuse me. The, the section would require the application materials from the applicant to specifically address the standards for consideration of a certificate. That application doesn't directly require that right now. So they're, they have to provide information specific to the standards. And then the final item here on the list was one of the ones that we spent the most time discussing, which was removal of the pilot and deferred approval. So both of those options would no longer be in the code under this draft amendment. Happy to answer any questions from the committee.
Questions?
I had a question about the, the vacant spaces, 414 4E. So for the purpose of calculating non-RSE for a building, you say that, that it's calculated as if it's retail for a vacant space. Wouldn't it make more sense for it to be calculated as if it's currently not retail? Because otherwise, there could be a 200,000 square foot space that's empty and then they want to put another space next to it.
We, so if it is, if it has been retail and has become vacant, if there's nothing being proposed in that space, we would consider it to still be retail. It would be the other space that isn't the subject of the application that we're talking about here. So if there are vacant units in a shopping center, they wouldn't be counted as non-retail if they were not previously non-retail. So if a retail store leaves, you don't assume that it's going to be replaced by non-retail use until there's an actual proposal for a non-retail use?
It's presumed to...
Presumed to be...
Presumed to be retail.
I guess maybe I'm thinking of the calculation differently, because I thought you have to show a certain percentage that's retail, but if the whole space is empty, then they would still qualify and then they wouldn't, they would, they still wouldn't have a problem adding another non-retail space.
Right, so it's really more the non-retail percentage that you're, that we're looking at. It's, it's that 20% non-retail eclipsing, eclipsing that number that triggers the conversion certificate. So the rest of it is still considered to be retail if it were, if we were vacant.
Right, but I'm saying if you've got a space that's enormous, that's empty, we're getting no tax revenue from it, they want to put another space as a non-retail, they want to convert something that's non-retail, then it would sort of automatically qualify, even though theoretically nothing could be retail, and it would still qualify.
Yeah, I, I think the, the best way I could think of to describe it is that if it is a vacant retail unit, it's still considered to be a retail unit.
Even though it's not generating any revenue?
Correct, that they wouldn't be penalized for filling another unit necessarily.
For filling another unit for, a different unit for non-retail, even though the rest of the, the building or center is empty?
Correct.
Seems a little... A little backwards to me. Okay.
Other comments, questions? This just, it does kind of clarify and bring us more into line with current, you know, trends within retail and that, correct?
Yeah, I think the, the primary changes here were adjustment of the standards, adjustment of the application materials, adjustment of the, the pilot. The others, the other recommendations that I've made here were to put into the code how we've applied this program. So how we do the calculation. Where there wasn't specific language, I've tried to make it clearer how, how this, how this actually works.
And much of the specifics of this particular ordinance were, were written prior to, you know, a lot of the new retail we've got.
Correct, and trends in, in retail have certainly changed since 2010, so.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? Is there a motion? Do we need a motion on this, or?
No.
Just looking for consensus to move this forward.
Bring back something, okay. Trustee Schenk?
Yeah.
Trustee Markhart?
Yep.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We'll schedule this for a public hearing with Planning and Zoning Commission, and it'll come back following their review and recommendation.
Okay. Next item is concept review for Nest Child Care Facility, 401 West Sullivan Drive. Again, Director Jennings?
Thank you. The Nest is a contract less C of the former Superior Ambulance Building located at 401 Sullivan. So this is the southeast corner of Sullivan and 45. It's an existing 11,700 square foot building, and New Look Development, who's working with Nest, is proposing to convert that building to operate a daycare facility. I will let the applicant come forward in just a moment and describe just a couple of notes from the staff review on this. The, the main concern that the staff had in this conceptual review is the existing traffic pattern at Sullivan and 45. In the morning, traffic can sort of bunch up in accordion effect all the way to the tracks. So you have periods where there's a gap, but then it bunches up again. And the concern here is, as the AM peak drop-off window would coincide with that, is there adequate, are there adequate gaps in traffic to let everybody clear out? So if the consensus of the committee is to move forward to technical review on this, that is one of the items that we'd be working with them on, is just making sure that some consideration for the traffic pattern is, is provided should this go to a special use review with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So with that, I'd like to have Michael Freiberger from New Look Development come forward and, and present, and, and I'm happy to take questions after his presentation.
Thank you, Andrew. Sure. Hang on one second. Okay, I mean, do you let them know we were on the last item, agenda item? Okay, sure.
Okay. Mayor, can you hear me? Yeah? You're on, believe last item on the cow. Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Okay. Go ahead with your, and, and again, state your name and...
My name's Michael Freiberger. I'm the owner of New Look Development. Thank you, Board, for discussing this with us today. As noted, can I go? Okay. As noted, my name's Michael Freiberger. I'm the owner and director of design and planning for New Look Design, Build and Development out of Wilmette. We're a vertically integrated architecture, construction and development company. And today, we're here representing the Nest for what would be their second location in Chicago. I do have a colleague with me, Dennis, back there. I'd like to thank Andrew for his time so far and, and working with helping us get this presentation put together. The Nest is a almost nationwide childcare education facility at this point. They have 55 Nest facilities around the country, all in similar communities to this. There is currently two, one that's open in Crystal Lake, one that is literally getting a certificate of occupancy in the next couple of days in Barrington. We were a part of the design, build, development process in Barrington, and I will reference some of that. The Nest sees the new facility as being an amenity that will make Vernon Hills even more attractive to potential residents and employers. As society has evolved to more dual-working parents and single-parent households, the availability of convenient, high-quality childcare has become an even more important factor in people's decisions about where they live and the jobs they accept, as well as where companies locate. In summary, the Nest will provide a vital and needed source of high-quality childcare for Vernon Hills families, build the commercial tech space, create new jobs, and provide an amenity to the business and residential communities, which should help with the town's continued growth. The Nest is, is unique in a couple of ways and can, do consider themselves a leader in the industry. The Nest thoughtfully considers optimal design elements to cultivate the ideal learning environment. Specifically, they have quite the, quite the outdoor play areas. Their proprietary play-based curriculum is modern, paperless and research-inspired. They have learning management platforms for staff training and continuing education is a key driver of employee engagement and retention, which leads to highly skilled care of the children. They have tools augmenting the family-child experience. They have tools facilitating employee productivity and consistent adherence to standard protocols. They have been growing significantly. The family behind the Nest, they are all corporate-owned, this is not a franchise, they are a corporate-owned. The family behind the Nest has been doing this for, I think, over 50 years. They had previously had a different brand that they sold off and then started another one. This has been going on for quite some time now. As I said, there's around 55 of them thus far and continuing to grow.
Are they all in the Chicago area?
No, sir. They are actually, currently there are only two in Chicago. This would be the third location in Chicago. Otherwise, they're in Colorado, Texas, Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, Virginia, a bunch in Ohio and Connecticut. They do have plans to...
Do they compete against, like, Gatter?
I believe they do, yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I...
I, I know that they do have plans to try to expand to somewhere in the neighborhood of a dozen or so in the Chicagoland area. This is one of their biggest growing markets.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. This, uh, this is a slide of the one that we are just getting finished with in Barrington. It was a very similar structure, very similar project base, rather, in that old building needed a lot of updating. This one was actually even more extensive than what we'll propose at 401. But what you can see here is a nice, clean, modern design, which actually will be slightly different in, in this application. different in this application, that just fit that building a little bit more. But you can see the extensive outdoor play areas that they really do value. You'll see a significant amount of that proposed on this plan and then kind of a generic, one of the, one of the classrooms here in the bottom right. This is just.
I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm saying this kind of facetiously, you probably should keep one of the ambulances, in case the kids get hurt.
I will, I will check with ownership if they'd like to try to get one of those as well.
It's all right.
This is just an example of what, this should have been a slide before. This is just an example of what we did have in Barrington. It was actually an old education-like facility. It was actually how they managed their, their school district out of that building many, many years prior, fairly abandoned, then we put together a rendering and ultimately we got to that finished product. Hopefully that's going to clear up a little bit. Okay, there we go. So the site that we're discussing at the corner of 45 and Sullivan Drive is approximately 1.97 acres. The building, as Community Development Director said, is 11,725 square feet. We're really not proposing to add or take away from that square footage. There will be sort of some very minimal, we're proposing some very minimal kind of bolt-on aesthetics, meaning, you know, some window bump outs, but we wouldn't necessarily be changing all of that. There is, what we will be proposing though, is on that northeast side is getting rid of that northern path and the northern, I think there's a little bit of parking there, although maybe it's not shown, and all that area in green is proposed to be their series of playgrounds. That totals approximately 11,300 square feet of exterior playgrounds. That would still leave us with 83 parking spaces on the site, with workers occupying approximately 30 to 35 of those spaces. So this is more than we need, our typical minimum is we weren't looking for 50 parking spaces on a site. This has more and that's okay. There will plan to be 35 employees, hold on, let me go back to my other notes here for a second. 35 employees at any one time. They do expect to be up to 45 employees within three years, but no more than 35 sort of onsite at any one time. 35 and then 10 part-time. So one of the things that we wanted to address after our conversation with Mr. Jennings is exactly how this typically works at the other schools. And what we've got back as data is that we expect six to eight parents dropping off at a time with a maximum of 12 to 14, and that is within a, you know, at any one time within a two-hour drop-off and two-hour pickup window. And so that helps spread out some of this, some of this actual traffic, you know, from dropping off and picking up. There is the hours.
14 in two hours?
Yes, sir.
So you have 20-some kids for the building?
So, no, sir. So I apologize about that. So it's, they expect between, so maximum of 12 to 14 sort of at any one time that are dropping off in the building. So within this two-hour window, that's typically how it works out. So the hours of operation are from seven to six.
And expecting roughly how many?
I'm going to get to that one in one second.
Okay, well, while we're on this. Do you know the distance by any chance from your driveway access to 45?
Well, that's a good question, Dennis. You may have that at your fingertips, I don't know. I would guess a little more than 100 feet, and that is the existing location, right? So we're not proposing to change any of that.
Okay, thanks.
You're talking about the distance from the ingress to 45?
Yes. It's probably closer to 150 feet, to be honest with you.
Because I'm thinking about stacking.
Yep, I know. If I go to.
About seven or eight, eight car lengths or so it looks like.
Which is sort of what?
193 feet.
193, thank you, very good. Thank you for that.
What's that?
Like 190. To the inner, to the walkway. 175 if you can center the ingress to.
To the corner, right?
Walk path.
Right.
Parallel to 45.
There is, so the school is designed to have a capacity of 210 children, or this is clearly shows 209. It has 13 classrooms, which vary in age range, and those have various requirements in terms of, you know, the assemblage and amounts we can put in there. There is a warming kitchen, a teacher's lounge, a lobby, bathrooms and some mechanical spaces. But 210 is the max, and they would be anywhere from six weeks to five years old. Any questions about any of that thus far? I don't know if you guys can actually see that.
Is it drop-off, like a car line, or do they walk them in?
They walk them in.
No matter what the age is, five years old, six years?
I, if I remember correctly, I believe that their protocol is that you do walk the children in, correct?
So this.
Which helps break up that car line a little bit as well.
That stacking car line then is, you know, they're going to be parking in the.
Correct.
Half, half the spots, it sounds like you're.
Correct, that is accurate. And I think that does help with the stagger actually too. I think it's both that why, reason and because they're young enough and they have that, they like that level of service that they do want them to walk the children in.
So exiting though, with 12 to 14 coming in, you're going to have 12 to 14. So 12 to 14 stagger throughout two-hour period, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight classrooms or so, say 15 in a class.
80, 95, 45.
So there's 200 max capacity.
So 200 max capacity, so 200 in, in a two-hour. Chief, so like, would you say exiting out of there, turning left or right, 15 cars every 10 minutes, five minutes? It's not going to be an issue, is it?
Oh, get down to.
Because you're going to have, because the one thing you got to take, you got that group leaving and then you got that other group coming in, right?
The two biggest problems are people eastbound waiting to turn left onto Sullivan.
Yeah.
And people southbound on Sullivan waiting to turn east on 45, because all these drop-offs and pickups are going to be at the absolute peak time of traffic on Route 45.
Yeah, I, to answer your question, I, I don't think we have enough information in front of us to say whether there would be an impact. It's, it, but I think your instinct is spot on. It's something to drill in on and look at the average counts of that intersection exchange and see if this would be an impact.
When you speak of impact, you speak of backing up traffic, basically?
And there's already a neighborhood right there, all those people are trying to get out too, at that time of day.
Yeah.
So we do need to have an analysis to look and see how, how hard is it for them to get out in the morning?
I mean, I'm sure planning and zoning are going to take a hard look at that.
Yeah.
When they get to it. Do you know the first drop-off time of the day?
Seven, so the hours are seven to six, and it's typically going to be staggered between seven and nine and then four and six.
So it's, it's preschool plus daycare, basically, right? That's the model?
Yeah, I mean, they call it early childhood education, but yes, that's what it is. I do believe, and I don't have the data on this, I do believe that typically they do expect that families have multiple kids in this facility as well, right? So it's not necessarily that there's 200 cars, right? And I don't have the exact specifics on that, but I do think that there's typically overlap as well, and so that does reduce that number as well.
But what kind of household income levels do you see in role to Nest schools?
That is a good question. I'm a little more on the design, build, development piece. I can get that for you.
Could you get that for us?
I know that it is, I know that it is an upper income level. I do know that, you know, they have a very specific criteria of, you know, which neighborhoods make sense, and I know that this one fits perfectly into that. But yes, I can clarify that. I, I have it in some data, otherwise I don't know if you have it from Barrington, but.
Does this have to go for planning and zoning or?
Yes.
This is considered a special use in the ORND district, so it does have to go through planning and zoning. We will, we'll have a technical review prior to that and will be most likely working on traffic issues.
Got a deep dive on that traffic? Yeah. Along with current counts at that intersection.
Yeah, we'll be working with them to decide whether a, a full-blown study is needed or if we can accept some just analysis using existing counts and, and sort of a gap analysis.
Are the neighboring residents informed of this because it's a special use?
They will be, not until the technical review is completed though. So we don't, we don't send out notice until there's a specific date for the hearing.
That would be for the P&amp;G meeting, right?
Correct.
I'm sure there's a couple more questions. I'll just, I do have a couple more slides here.
Sure.
This is just some quick model views of what we propose to do to the building. So we're keeping the entrance in the exact same spot. We're keeping generally all of the, the parking on that south side altogether, excuse me, as existing. The plan is really to rebuild that front entrance a little bit. They have a brand standard of kind of this gable effect, and we're proposing to then mirror that with a couple of little bump outs. As you can see, there's five of them on this south-facing side. The north-facing side, for the most part, stays the same in terms of building construction itself. And then, you know, if we dive a little bit into some very, very early conceptual sort of, you know, looks of the building, we're talking about leaving the existing brick for the most part and painting it, that is typically their standard, adding this composite wood material, and then likely adding a third element, which may be painted wood siding, it may be stucco, not ephesus, but sort of very, very simple, very, very kind of clean in, in this manner. We have a couple handful more views here.
I noticed on, on one of the other drawings, it said you were getting rid of the fence behind. Is there, is, is there going to be any barrier between the playground and?
100%, so every one of the playgrounds, actually any place that a kid could ever go after they're dropped off will always be enclosed within a fence. And it'll depend on your guys' fence standards, but every one of those playgrounds will be enclosed entirely.
Okay.
And I think to get rid of it was only to accommodate putting our new fence in, and I'm not even sure about that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Because this would then go through.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, what's the distance from the town home?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
From here?
What's the distance between the town hall, the homes behind?
The nearest town hall, yeah.
Uh, well, the building itself hasn't changed, right? So obviously we're proposing to put the playground back there. I would have to clarify that information. I don't have an existing ASB.
Probably, like, a minimum is probably about 20 feet from the end of, it looks like from the backside of the playground.
Yeah, well, the people on Maplewood Drive would back right up to the playground.
Yeah, the northeast corner of your.
Dennis, we actually, we have a buffer zone before our playground, so we probably have 20 feet at least on our site and then another, you know, whatever their backyard is as well. And in.
So you said there's mature landscaping there right now?
Yes.
Correct, correct. And what typically isn't adequate or, you know, in good condition, we typically will replace that and put, provide additional screening as necessary.
All right. But I'll ask Andrew though, you know, obviously this setback was approved years ago, so is it 20 feet, is it 40 feet? I mean, how far is it?
Looks like it's 25 to 30 by max.
Yeah, it's 25 feet. The corner, the closest, the closest corner of the, of the house to the fence line is 25 feet.
Okay.
And then everything else.
So I guess I'll, I'll defer to that. What's the best fence to put up there? You know, to, I guess, protect the residents.
Yeah, so for resident protection, just in terms of noise and whatnot, you would see what they had shown for the Barrington location, which was, it looks like about a six-foot board on board. A lot of times, for security purposes, portions of the fence, like the other side of it, may be what you see there, which is visually open. A lot of daycares in the playground area will keep a visually open portion.
Correct.
So the emergency responders can see in. So the, the barrier fence would be more like solid wood, and then the other fencing likely be something that's visually open.
Well, it's going to be a sound issue too. You got.
Lot of kids.
Lot of kids out there playing, and now suddenly what was once a quiet, maybe having a nice cup of coffee in their yard is no longer, so.
Although, it was ambulance.
It was ambulance, but they weren't blown out of there with their sirens though. They're, they're private.
I don't know at what point they turned the siren.
So one of the things we do try to do, I mean, certainly there's not, at this point in a plan to build any type of sound, you know, wall.
Well, there might be.
But typically we have a six-foot fence and then we would put the screening up to try to help buffer as well.
Yeah, I think a six-foot fence is too short, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and everybody within what, 250 feet will be notified of the hearings, so, right? Yeah.
And when, of course, when the weather gets cold, the kids won't be out there.
But it's also all year round because it's daycare too, right?
That's correct.
So it's during the summer also.
That is accurate.
Okay, so. We need here is consensus to move forward with the technical review.
Yeah, the counts are correct.
Trustee Schenk?
Yes.
Trustee Markwart?
Yes.
Trustee Avonheim? Trustee, uh, Mayor Byrne?
Yeah, sure, yeah, sure. Is it the park district knows are coming?
I'll know tomorrow.
They know? Okay, yes.
Don't know tomorrow? Okay.
I'll know tomorrow.
I'll be interested to see what their, what their comments are.
It's just down the street.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much.
Because there's going to, it's, it, just the one serious concern is that traffic problem, because that intersection, because I drive by it a lot, is a very tough intersection.
Understood. I will personally be out there one of the days this week to see it with my own eyes and then we will follow whatever.
It might also be able to give us something to prompt, I doubt, to maybe add a little pavement to the right side of that so people can go around, somebody wait for a left.
Trustee Cook, if I can remind the petitioner that this is not a formal approval.
I understand.
It is an opportunity to get input, which you did tonight. You will go before technical review, which will allow you to finalize your plans. Planning and zoning, public hearing, ultimately you will get back before the village board for formal consideration, which, and that final decision can actually be a denial or a conditional approval. This is just informal consensus at this point.
Understood, sir. Thank you. Thank you, I look forward to seeing you guys again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Since there's nothing else to, on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole? There is no closed session tonight, correct?
Correct. Motion to adjourn?
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Aye.